Calling to order the Cuyahoga County Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 22, 2006. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Strawn.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
And Council President Brady.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Any public comment related to the agenda?
None, Mr. President.
All righty. Item four, refer to the committee, the confirmation hearing. All right. Welcome to the confirmation hearing in which council will consider the appointment of Thomas Presto as Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. For a little background, the Department of Health and Human Services and the duties and qualifications of the director were established under Article Eight of the county charter. Mr. Presto is currently serving as the administrator of the Division of Children and Family Services and will assume the position of director upon council's confirmation. The hearing will proceed as follows. The nominee will be offered an opportunity to address his qualifications, motivations for seeking the position, and outlook and plans regarding the office. Council members will then be offered the opportunity to ask questions of the nominee. We will do so in rounds, allowing each council member to ask two questions per round until all council questions have been answered. Once all questions have been asked, we will entertain a motion to recommend that the council approve or reject the nomination at the next regular council meeting. If we are not ready to act on that motion today, we will defer making the recommendation. Assuming a motion to recommend approval or rejection has been made, council will vote on that recommendation at its next regular meeting. Thank you, and let's begin. Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution number 2016-0051, a resolution confirming the county executive's appointment of Thomas D. Presto upon his taking the oath of office as Director of the Department of Health and Human Services and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Presto, and good to see you here. You can begin your presentation anytime.
Good afternoon, Council President Brady, members of the council. I am very pleased and honored to be here today to talk about my qualifications and background for the position of Director of Health and Human Services. I'll also discuss my vision for collaboration and effective, efficient health and human services for our county families and employees, as well as transparency and accountability to you, the council, and to our county taxpayers. I'm excited to be here to be working children and families in Cuyahoga County. Managing for system change and for child and family service outcomes is what energizes me, and I believe this is a time of great opportunity. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Pennsylvania, right next door. I served for nine years in both the Marine Corps and the Army. I have a 36-year-old daughter who lives in Maryland, and I've also been training in five different systems of the martial arts for the past 35 years. The discipline required from both the military and my training helps guide my work and personal life. After I completed my military service, I earned both my bachelor's and master's degree from the University of Maryland. I started my career 31 years ago by beginning it with a private provider specializing in children's services. Since then, I've worked for a for-profit hospital in New Jersey, for a council on alcoholism in Connecticut, and as an administrator and clinical director for a children's residential treatment program in northern New Hampshire. And that was before joining the Department of Children and Family Services, where I spent 15 years as both a district and regional director for child welfare and probation. I've been a director of Health and Human Services for the city of Norfolk, Virginia, and Louisa County, Virginia, for their child welfare, public assistance, child support, and detention centers. I spent three years as a state director for Nebraska's Children and Family Services before coming here as your director for CFS. I see myself as a change agent. I look for ways to make thoughtful and strategic system changes to achieve the best possible outcomes for residents in our own neighborhoods. County services must be robust and comprehensive throughout the human lifecycle, including children, families, older adults, and returning citizens. One of my strengths is developing changes within systems, and I find it to be most meaningful when it impacts the resiliency of families and communities, helping them navigate life's challenges to create opportunities for lifelong stability. My work in Health and Human Services has included redesigning and realigning services by engaging government and community partners to implement the most effective systems of care to meet the needs of our citizens. For example, in Nebraska, I moved the child welfare system from a privatized model to a state-supervised, state-administered system of care in order to achieve better outcomes for children and families. I invested in and implemented results-based accountability for all our child welfare contracts because it determined whether or not the programs we are making were making a difference in the children's lives or not. I was responsible for statewide Medicaid and SNAP programming and deploying a staff across the state in order to achieve more effective and efficient government-public assistance programs. I made this investment strategically and with the priority centered on our families to achieve timely benefits, accuracy, and efficiency. Most recently, here at CFS, we've refocused our staff and supervisors to embrace a back-to-basics model that centers on child safety, permanency, and well-being while focusing on growing a healthy and robust work environment. I restructured the departments within CFS by function to increase efficiency, accountability, and cross-collaboration. I've implemented a triage team to convene professionals that include developmental disabilities, the Adams Board, probation, courts, and CFS. This team looks at children where treatment can be delivered safely and sufficiently in their homes without bringing that child into custody. The Quality Parenting Initiative began this year at CFS, and it provides foster families and kinship caregivers with immediate training resources and also a prominent place on the child's treatment team, and it focuses on rebranding our foster care system to demonstrate an accurate portrayal of the high-quality caregivers we have for our children. Childstat is part of a larger initiative pertaining or partnering with the Annie E. Casey Foundation to transform our workforce and decision-making processes. Childstat is a monthly forum used to point out systematic barriers and gaps through case presentation and consultation, and I sit on that board. In organizations, the culture and environment are critical to their success. Over the years, I developed five value statements that drive my work, and I brought those five value statements here with me to CFS. They are simple, basic, and comprehensive. One, staff and supervisors are supported and have a say in how they do their jobs. Two, we have programs that work, and we know why they work. Three, we pay our bills on time, come in on budget. Four, we deliver the best services in the country. And five, we treat each other with compassion, respect, and kindness. For me, number five is particularly important and permeates throughout the other four. It sets the tone for how we interact, not only with our citizens, but just as importantly, how we work with one another. It provides expectations around inclusion, nondiscrimination, and cultural competency. It's very much connected to a positive and open work environment. Let me share some data with you. Since arriving last April, the average investigative caseload was 26 per worker. Today, it is 15.2, with the national standard being 12. Total number of children in care to date is 1,700. 24% of those children in care today are in kinship or relative care. 66% of those children are in foster care or adoptive homes. That's 90% of our children that are in healthy, safe family environment. We currently have nine youth in our out-of-state residential care. The number of families who are providing prevention services is over 4,100. That includes alternative response and voluntary services. In the past eight months, our staff turnover rate has dropped 49%. How did we get this accomplished? Two ways. One, by developing expectations for all staff that we have a healthy work environment and having accountability to that end. Two, the focus on back-to-basics and the safety, permanency, and well-being of all our children. I have a great staff. They're motivated, and they're inspired to work with their families. I have deputies, senior managers, and supervisors who go the extra mile to support their staff. I couldn't ask for a better team. I lead with transparency, and I don't micromanage. In return, I receive open communication and accountability. Ways that I model that include: I demonstrate a consistent example of respect and kindness. I provide for open and honest communication. I conduct regular staff forums at each site. I hold focus groups with staff. I send a weekly message to all staff detailing what I've done during the week, and then I provide them with a forum to ask questions or make comments, to which I personally review the answers before publishing. If confirmed by this council, I will take a similar approach with HHS. We'll begin developing a stronger, more robust HHS strategic planning initiative in order to ensure that we identify comprehensive needs of our community, that we set priorities and goals to meet those needs, that we assess and, if needed, acquire the necessary resources, and that we provide council, staff, and taxpayers with a clear plan to ensure that our programs are effective and make a real difference in people's lives. We will centralize the agency's financial and contracting process in order to minimize duplication of services, break down silos between agencies, so this will provide department heads with agency support in developing and managing their budgets. With contracts across HHS, we will develop results-based accountability through performance-based contract management that will be designed by not only our staff, our internal staff, but also with the providers. This will be a way to ensure that taxpayer money is spent on programs that work. I am committed to our provider network. I've made it a priority to build relationships and form partnerships with private providers and neighborhood collaboratives. In my experience, I've worked with providers on rate adjustments and outcomes and streamlining programming so that we get the absolute best services from the providers for our children and families. I share Executive Arm and Buttish's priority to significantly lower the infant mortality rate in Cuyahoga County. CFS receives a report of every child death in the county and follows a procedure to protect other children who may be unsafe or at risk due to abuse and neglect. In those cases, I, along with my team, meet with the caseworker within 24 hours of the incident to review the case and to provide support. We are focused on doing everything we can to prevent child deaths. Staff provide education and support to all families in collaboration with the Board of Health and local hospitals. Each HHS agency has a role to play in making sure our youngest, most vulnerable citizens have the opportunity for a healthy childhood. As Director of HHS, I will align the agencies and others to join in discovering more methods of prevention and support. We will continue the progress at CFS, where we are seeing success in changing the culture and the environment. Our retention rate is higher than when I started, and our general staff satisfaction is also higher based on forums and focus groups that I've held. I respect your role as council members so that we make sure that this critical safety net of Health and Human Services operates with ethical transparency, accountability, and gets the results for the people we serve. I am committed to working with the council, deepening and strengthening our system of care so that every stage of our citizens, every stage of life, our citizens have the tools and opportunities for success and stability to build healthy, productive families and communities. In closing, I couldn't be happier representing the administration to be part of the system of care of our county. If confirmed, I will bring all my experience in leadership, programming, and accountability to work with all the department heads and staff to ensure the absolute best array of child and adult-centered services for all our citizens. Thank you for listening. This is the end of my opening remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Presto. I'd like to try to get this out of the way right up front. There have been some newspaper articles and interest in your work in Nebraska, and I know that's going to come up, so I'm just going to bring it up and let you tell us about Nebraska. Tell us about your experience in Nebraska. There have been a lot of newspaper articles going around. Some council members have read some of them, and I'd like to hear from you, your point of view.
Sure, absolutely, Council President Brady. I spent three years in Nebraska as a state director for Children and Family Services. The environment that I came to at the State of Nebraska was fraught with tension. It was in a privatized model of child welfare, and the governor moved it to a state safety net model. I had about 118 providers that I had to work with that relinquished the child welfare aspect of the service provision and had to bring that back under the state umbrella. There was some tension about rate adjustments. We had, and I'll get to some of the articles that you're talking about had to do with when I developed a panel of providers and state folks to deal with different rates across the administrative rates and service rates for our providers. There was a range, again, from anywhere between 20 and 80% of, maybe off a couple percentage points here, but it's close. And we needed to get the percentage rates of what the admin rates were for these providers a little bit more in line. So there was an article written. A senator in the legislature wasn't happy that I was making the providers do something that was going to potentially reduce some of the costs that they had or some of the revenue that they were getting. We did do the rate adjustments with the providers. It went well. They all agreed to it. I had them on the team to design the rates. It ended up working very well. I also implemented results-based accountability. There was no accountability in the state of Nebraska for the $300 million worth of contracts I was responsible for. It took 18 months to develop the results-based accountability protocol, and again, I did it with the providers. They were part of the team to help establish the indicators and outcomes that they would be measured by. There was some grumbling. There wasn't any articles about that, but there was grumbling because, again, when you design a system to hold folks accountable, you have to be very sensitive for how that plays out, and we did. I was not kept over when the new governor got elected. I was hired by Governor Heineman. He did 10 years as governor in the state of Nebraska, and he turned out of office. The new governor, Governor Ricketts, came in and claimed the cabinet out.
Thank you, Mr. Presto. Are there any other questions on Nebraska?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Just point of clarification. Was it the governor or you that transitioned the welfare system from privatized to state?
I operationalized it. It was the governor's decision to take it out of the privatized model into the state safety net model because it was an abject failure. The privatization model was an abject failure.
His decision, but your execution?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, councilman?
When you state that you had to get people in line, give me an example of who fell in line and how you did that.
Can you say more, sir, about that?
You said that you had to get people in line, and we did that. Who did you get in line, and how did you do that?
When we were doing rate adjustments, we had to talk about what would be a reasonable rate for the services that were provided, and it was a discussion. It was building relationships. It took 18, RBA was 18 months. It took about nine months to do the rate adjustments with both my team and the providers together. And it was just to get folks to understand what the process is and how do we move forward with a reasonable, efficient accountability and product so that we can have a standardized rate for our services that we pay for. And getting them in line, I guess the vernacular, it was working together so that we came out, at the end of the day, the same place.
Do you have a follow-up? Councilman Strawn?
Thank you, St. Louis, Nebraska. Nebraska was the privatized model when you came onboard initially?
No, sir, it had, I got there in March of '12, and January of '12 is when it went back to the state. I got hired three months, two months afterwards.
Okay, so it was already starting to move to the safety net models you're referring to it as. Does that mean the privatized models are bad models?
I wouldn't say that out of hand. I would say that it depends how it's set up, and it depends on how it's funded. I'll just leave it at that.
And did you do anything to try and fix it, that model, or was the decision already?
That decision was already made. In fact, we had one area of the state that continued to be privatized throughout my tenure at Nebraska. In Nebraska, the system of care was divided into five areas. Four of the areas was under the state safety net. One continued to be privatized. It was run by Boystown. So I continued to work with them during the three years that I was there under that privatized model for that one area.
Thank you.
Councilman Greenspan?
Sure. There was an article, a report, that the state of Nebraska had to repay $22 million to the federal government. Was that during your tenure that that transaction, that those funds were determined to be misspent, or was that prior to your tenure?
The $22 million sanction was due to the failed privatization effort. I had to pay for it during my tenure.
So the activities related to the demand were prior to your tenure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on Nebraska? Okay, hearing none. All right. Any questions from the committee? Questions from the committee. Councilman Miller?
Good afternoon, Director. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on being recommended for what I consider to be one of the most important positions in county government. And I want to thank you for providing us written copies of your testimony. We usually don't get that, and it's very helpful because you provided a very good overview of how you think and what you've done and what you plan to do and what your philosophy is, and I appreciate that. And I particularly think that in this world of government service, that kindness and respect are the two most important principles that there are, and I appreciate your commitment to them and your efforts to put them into practice. I also want to say that since the beginning of the new county government, that I've been an advocate of a comprehensive strategic planning process in the health and human services area. We have that in economic development, but as required by charter. In the human services area, there's been strategic planning done in almost all of the different divisions, but there's not been a community-wide process, and I think we need that. So I appreciate your commitment to that as stated in your statement, and your goals are the same as mine, and I look forward very much to working with you on that process.
Thank you, Councilman Miller.
The one question I'd like to ask is that you said that you were able to reduce the investigative caseload from 26 to just over 15. And I don't know that there's been a significant increase in staff, so I'm wondering how you were able to accomplish that reduction.
Councilman Miller, as I said in my opening remarks, I have a great team around me. Deputy Tammy Chapman-Wagner is responsible for the hotline and investigations. And when we first reviewed where we were when I came onboard in April of last year, investigations took all of our attention to try to develop a process so that we can get that in a way that meets the needs not only of our citizens, but so that the staff aren't overwhelmed. That back-to-basics model that I talked about in my opening, that was a collective effort of my senior leadership team so that we could go back to the basics of what we do really well, which is child welfare, investigations, permanency, safety, and well-being. Deputy Tammy Chapman-Wagner developed her team. She got responsibility for the entire aspects of the hotline and investigations, and she's been working since, I think we started this, we started it November 2nd. She's been working diligently with her senior team, with her team, to make this work. And it's just been refocusing and providing the space for the staff to do the job that they got hired to do.
So, Mr. President, Director, is the reduction in investigative caseload, is it as a result of more workers are doing investigations, or are there fewer investigations than we've had in the past, or what accounts for the improvement in the numbers?
Councilman Miller, the investigations are pretty much the same as they were last year. There hasn't gone higher or lower. What happened is that we're working with the Annie E. Casey Foundation with an initiative called "On the Front Line," which helps us, looks at our front end of our system. How do we manage it? How do we make sure that we're doing the best possible service for the kids coming into care? But also, what do we need to streamline in our investigatory process so that we can make sure that we don't have overdue investigations and that we complete our investigations timely and we do the right type of investigations? Casey has worked with us. I'm sure you've heard their name before. Casey Family Programs have worked with us over the years in Cuyahoga County to develop a process for not only investigations, but for whole child welfare system.
So, I'm sure, I appreciate the response, Mr. President, Director, but I'm still not clear on how the improvement in numbers were achieved. I mean, that's a very large reduction, so, I mean, it seems to me either more staff have to be doing investigation. Did we shift work from other areas into investigations? Did we assign more people to do that process? How were you able to get the average per worker down?
We did not hire new staff. We used existing staff, and we worked with the ongoing staff to help augment some of the investigations that were overdue and that were ongoing. Deputy Cindy Weisskettle is, part of her staff also does investigations. So it actually was a team effort in order to focus on getting the work done in a timely manner. But part of that was also developing those expectations for staff to do that and giving them the space and the time to do it. When I first got here, we had somewhere about 160 committees and initiatives that we were working on in Children and Family Services. We streamlined that down to about 70. There was too many things going on. Folks needed to be refocused on back-to-basics, and that's what we did. We didn't need a new model. We needed to do the model that we had well, and that's what the deputies are running with their systems right now.
Thanks very much. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Miller. We're going to go to Councilwoman Conwell and then Councilwoman Simon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Director Presto, in your plans to consolidate the HHS division under one director, there are fundamentally different aspects of each of those agencies that directly affect the individuals they serve. For example, dedicated advisory boards for seniors, where advocacy from the county staff is prohibited to do so, so advisory boards need to remain intact, as far as I'm coming from. So before having mass rapid changes to all of these three departments, can you ensure that those changes will be made with the consideration of all aspects of how they will impact the individuals they serve?
Councilwoman Conwell, there's going to be no rapid changes. I will be working with the eight different department heads to look at and assess what we're doing. I need time to build a team with them. I need time to look at where the gaps are and where their successes are. We need to be able to build relationships across and in between the department heads and myself. The advisory boards, I'll be working with Dr. Jones and DSAS to look at what he needs, what he needs to, in the next 18 months, where some of the areas he's going to struggle with, where some of the areas he's going to be successful with, and what I can do to support that. There's not going to be any rapid changes. I need to get in there with, if confirmed, with the department heads and look and see what we have. I've been in CFS for the past 11 months and working hard with that department. I need the same type of time with HHS, with the other eight departments, in order to determine what it is we need to do, where are the gaps, and what are the next best steps. And working with our community partners, everything I've done in my career since Vermont has been engaging our community with any changes that we make and making sure that there's an avenue for response and an avenue for them to be heard in how we do what we do.
So, from your comment, no rapid changes. What is that timeframe that you're looking at right now?
I'm looking, Councilwoman Conwell, I'm looking I'm looking, Councilwoman Conwell, I'm looking, I need about three or four months first to establish a relationship with my senior leadership team, with the other eight department heads. We're also going to have HR, IT, legal on that senior leadership team. We need to grow together. We need to figure out what it is that our next steps are. But we need to form ourselves as a team first, and that takes some time. So the first three or four months is going to be having our meetings, getting to know what our areas of expertise are, and looking at what the needs of each individual department is as far as our citizens are concerned. Going to Councilman Miller's comment about strategic planning, you know, that's not going to happen on day one. That's going to, I need three or four months, and then probably around month six or seven, we can talk about some process to look at what are the planning, strategic planning protocols that we need to do. But we can't do anything until we develop a process together to work together.
Okay, can you commit to, since you said it would take three or four months, just to meet with the directors and get some sort of plan to move forward, would you be committed to, before you implement anything, to come to the HHS Committee and present to the committee in regards to what all of your directors and you establish and come up with, so we're not left in the dark. Sometimes we are. Communication gets bundled up, so we would like to know, at least from my perspective, how you would plan on moving forward?
Councilwoman Conwell, I've already discussed with Council Vice President Purnell Jones that I would be very willing to meet with him on a monthly basis in his office with bringing my department heads up with him, or with me. I also have no problem in coming in front of the HHSA Committee to talk about what we're doing on a regular basis. But I want to be able to have a relationship with members of the committee or of the council where we can sit in an office and talk about what's going on, so we can have a give and take. Also, there is a formal review process with the HHSA Committee, but I want to be able to develop a relationship with each of you if wanted, so that we can have a discussion about what's going on.
Okay. Kind of, I'm not done. Kind of in agreement with that question, and kind of, I have one more question. I know that was long. My concern is greatly in part to your holding two positions, DCFS Director as well as the HHS Administrator, moving forward. I view the Director's position as one to advocate for their employees and people they serve, and the Administrators to align with the county executive and totally a financial outlook. How will you be able to split yourself effectively in these two roles?
First, I'm going to keep, if confirmed, I will have HHS be located at the J-900 Building. As I said in my opening remarks, I have a great senior leadership team. They are awesome in what they do, and I will continue to lead them as I have in the past 11 months with our initiatives and strategic planning that we have. At the same time, I'll be working with the eight department heads and with that group to look at, you know, what are the gaps, what are the systems that we need to put into place. I believe that, I've done this for eight years in two different states, leading HHS organizations with the same, not the exact same complement, but with very diverse programming. My ability to manage senior staff and be able to look at accountability and outcomes and indicators, and be able to talk with staff, not only the senior leadership, but in their own organizations, helps that process that you're talking about, Councilwoman Conwell. I don't believe that it's going to be a huge problem at all for me to do both.
Okay, and my third question, what is your experience with working with unions?
Councilwoman Conwell, in Nebraska, we had a strong union. I had monthly meetings with the union president. I've even gone to meetings where he, the council president requested that staff had issues, and I would go and meet with the staff and the council union, or the union president, to discuss those. Here, in Cuyahoga County, I have a very good relationship with Pam Brown, who's the union president, or executive director, I'm not sure what she's called, and we work well together. So I have, just like with you, and I will keep her abreast of the things we're doing, ask for her input and ask for her advice on how we move forward with different initiatives and activities that impact the staff.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Simon?
Thank you. You talked a little, well, first, congratulations on this position. You've been recommended to, what challenges do you anticipate as you assume this new role if you were to be confirmed?
One of the assets I bring to Cuyahoga County is that I'm not from here. One of the liabilities I bring to this position is that I'm not from here. I haven't developed a network. I don't know the political entities in Columbus. That's what I'm learning. That's what I'm doing now, is I'm building my network. One of the challenges I have is making sure that that has time to evolve and grow. I need to, and not only with just Columbus and with the city, with the county council, but also with our providers and with the other eight departments and their constituencies. I don't have 15 years in Cuyahoga County where I know everybody, so it's going to take a little bit of time. And I'm up for the job for that. I am absolutely excited about getting to know who's who and what's what. I've done a fair bit of that since I've been here for 11 months, but I need to do some more.
What would be your overriding goal if you were to be confirmed? What would be your vision for the department?
The focus of this department needs to be our citizens, from cradle to grave. Are we developing and executing our services and our mandates to the best of our ability? How do we know what we're doing is making a difference? Do we have the result, the accountability metrics in place to determine whether or not what we do even makes a difference? We have to be able to get into a better, and grow our role, is how we develop a process to determine how much do we do, how well did we do it, is anyone better off? That's my goal. I mean, the focus is our citizens, regardless of whether it's CFS, or DSAS, or JFS, or any of the child support, or any of the other community initiatives.
And lastly, thank you. In terms of getting back to basics, you addressed that for a minute with Councilman Miller's questioning. You said there was over 100 committees that were in place that were perhaps diverting resources to other goals?
Councilwoman Simon, we had over, I think it was like 160 committees and initiatives at Children and Family Services when I arrived. That's a lot.
How did you determine how it would be whittled down to the 70?
I mentioned my senior leadership team before. We spent months, months, doing this, where we had, we didn't even have a comprehensive list of what they were when I got there. So we started there. What's the list? And then we went from that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now we're going to go back to Councilman Schron and then back to Councilman Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. You indicated in your opening remarks that you mentioned, you completed your military service?
Yes, sir.
And you said nine years in the Army?
Six years in the Marine Corps, three years in the Army.
Okay, so, all right, you didn't retire then, obviously, from the service, okay. So you had 10 years in. That's kind of unusual to be able to switch from one service over to the other. It's kind of a unique thing to be doing. I didn't, you're one of the few people I've known that switched from Army to Marines or vice versa out there. Unlike some of the other folks who are coming into these hearings, and they come in from Jacksonville, Florida, with very little background and stuff like, you've been here 11 months at this point in time. What would you say is the number one problem in Health and Human Services?
To fully answer that, I would need some time to get in there, in the other eight departments, and I've only been peripherally involved with them since, in my 11 months. But I will tell you what the number one problem in my agency was when I got here, was the staff environment and morale.
Okay, and what have you done to fix that, and what will you do to fix it?
I will use the same process that I used in CFS through HHS. What I did in CFS is that I met with all my staff at 50 at a time when I first got here. Took two or three months to do so. My first question to them was, none of you were part of my interview panel? This is your chance to interview me. You can ask me anything you want. And we had great conversations. They had to get a chance to know me, and we continue that today. I hold regular community, or staff forums in all three sites. I do a weekly message. Some of you are on my weekly message email, that I detail exactly what I do to my staff, and I send it out on Friday, usually Friday mornings or Friday afternoons. We hold, once a month, I randomly select 12 staff to have lunch with.
So with 11 months under your belt, and that's the number one problem that you had, and potentially the number one problem you're going to have, if we did a survey of the staff for those 11 months, you would assume that that has improved dramatically, the morale then?
I would say it has, sir.
If we did a survey, or employee survey, that kind of thing?
Yes, Councilman Schron. Our turnover rate dropped 49% in the past eight months, so I think that's a really good indicator. And also, I'm working with the HR Director, Douglas Dykes, to put together a 360 review on me, so that my senior leadership and colleagues across the county can review my performance over the past year. So we'll be able to see how well I've done.
Okay, and what did you actually do for the HHS levy to help pass it?
I participated in the weekly meetings that was held to help coordinate the support needed in order to, the communication support in order to get the levy to pass. I actually had to be real careful about saying what to staff because of the separation issue, but we talked about, you know, that levies are extraordinarily important here. It is our general fund, so to speak, and it's important to have a very good working knowledge of how that plays out and how that works. I was very happy that it passed.
I didn't ask you what you did with your staff, actually, what you personally did. So I understand you have to keep that separation out there. So, did you take community meetings? Did you go actively pursue and things of that nature is what I was looking for?
I put myself, there was a group of us that got together after hours to talk about what we can do to support the levy process. I put myself out there to write op-ed articles if necessary. That wasn't requested of me, and so I did not write one. But I went to those meetings and helped support the other folks in putting signage up, et cetera.
Thanks.
Schron, now we're going back to Councilman Gallagher and then get back to Councilman Brown. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Who, as you understand it, do you answer up to?
Currently, my role is CFS Director.
In your role, if confirmed?
I would be reporting to the Chief of Staff and also to potentially Matt Carroll.
So two individuals that are not confirmed by this council? You find that a little bit odd as a Director? Question?
That's the organizational chart that I have been told that is in play, and that's above my pay grade right now to talk about whether or not I should be reporting to somebody else.
In a few short years, the senior population in Cuyahoga County is going to be well over a third, which I think translates, and I haven't done the numbers, but I'm guessing probably a good 50% of the voters in Cuyahoga County are going to be seniors. As we stand right now, we spend $18.7 million a year on senior services, and we have 100,000 more people in Cuyahoga County than Franklin County. They spend $50 million a year. In your consolidations, how are you going to get to that $50 million Franklin County number?
I've met with Dr. Jones, who's the Director of DSAS. One of the things that, actually, he's doing in his area that we're going to be doing in ours, is looking at how to receive Medicaid, to bill Medicaid for the services that we're providing. That's something that he does not do now. He works off, I think, 80 or 90% levy funding. So we're looking at ways to find more reimbursable dollars from the federal government for DSAS. I would be working with Richard Jones on how do we want to move forward with this? What are the next things we need to do in the next six to 18 months in order to have a more, a deeper aspect of funding with grants, and especially the federal funding piece, which I find is way underutilized.
I think Cuyahoga County is unique in the HHS funds that are provided by our citizens. And everybody has a problem with money. I recognize that, and I certainly recognize that. But I find it really appalling that we have seniors living in poverty, seniors living alone, that have no access to services through Cuyahoga County, when those in Franklin County do in other counties, quite honestly, that don't have HHS-type dollars available. I don't know how, with your answer, you closed that gap, but I wish you luck. I would be watching this like a hawk. We had to beg, borrow, and steal in the last budget process to get money to seniors and senior centers. It was difficult. There was difficulty throughout the budget. But to have that kind of a gap for our seniors, who will be the main voters in this county in 14 years, is appalling. And we need to, in 14 years, close that gap, if not extend over the $50 million. And it doesn't seem anybody's very interested in doing that. So my challenge to you is going to be to get her done. And if you can't get her done, we're going to have to find somebody to get her done. And that's a tough, that's a tough thing that I'm throwing out to you, and I recognize that. But these are people in need. These are our seniors. I'm going to be part of that, unfortunately. So I think I have a little skin in the game, unfortunately. I never thought I'd get there. But I think we owe it to the people that got us here, the people that shaped this county, our seniors. And it seems like we concentrate so much on the young folks, and I get that also. But I think we need, and I'm hopeful that I have others that'll back me up on this, is that we need to lead the charge to start looking at our seniors like other countries do, as cherished objects, as opposed to those that are set out on the trash with, you know, with $18.7 million, which sounds like a lot, but it isn't.
Yes, sir.
I come from a city where we drop $1 million on our seniors, and it hurts, and it hurts our budget, but it certainly doesn't hurt our hearts. So I'm putting some big challenges out there for you. I don't know how you cut anything in DSAS. I'm looking for you to add there. And again, we have a two-year budget. As we go forward, I'm looking for you to make some big strides here.
Yes, sir. If I may, Councilman Gallagher, in my short time here, in 11 months I'm here, one of the things I've been very impressed with is Dr. Jones and his ability to see, have a vision for how our seniors are going to get the services they need. I look forward to working with him. I, you know, again, peripherally worked with him in my 11 months as a CFS Director, but in the meetings I've been with him, his commitment is strong in that, and I, we will have a plan.
I'm counting on you. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. We'll now go back to Councilwoman Brown and then back to Councilman Greenspan.
Thank you, Mr. President. During your opening remarks, you also stated that you wanted to centralize the agency's financial and contracting process. Can you give some examples of how you might achieve that?
Currently, we have nine different financial silos in HHS. Not working together, not streamlined, and hugely duplicative. And the same goes with contracting. Our contracts by department are different. We have no standardized way to determine whether or not what we're doing is making a difference with the vendor, that contract, with our citizens, with the children and families or adults, or whoever the contract is with. We have to be able to have, it's not a cookie-cutter approach, but it has, it's an accountability and a standardized approach for both financing, for financing, contracting, so that we can determine not only the best way to spend our taxpayer dollars, but I need these other eight department heads to get support when we do the biennial budget. And to have a process so that we can work together to determine how we're going, these are our kids, these are our families, not just CFS, or DSAS, or JFS, or the community initiatives. These are all ours, and we need to look at both our budgets and our contracts to that end. And the accountability piece is huge, but also having it managed in a way so that not only have a better budget process, but by doing only have a better budget process, but by doing this, we can draw down more dollars by having these shared services, which helps offset our levy funds.
Speaking of the levy funds, you've worked with the Adams Board, Metro Health, and Board of Developmental Disabilities, right?
Yes, Councilwoman.
And how can we improve the collaboration with those? And do you think that there should be a separate levy for maybe the mental health?
The past 11 months that I've been in children and families, we have made really great strides with Kelly Petty and Developmental Disabilities, and with Mr. Dennehan and the Adams Board, and also with Judge Sweeney over courts, Tim McDivitt in probation, not only just in talking, but actually developing programming together so that we can affect change in the programs that we're working on. As far as whether or not the mental health should get their own levy, what I would say to that is, I'm very satisfied with the budget process that I have, and I'm able to provide the services and meet the needs of our citizens through the entire budget process, and I don't have any reference point to comment on whether they should have their own levy fund or not.
And I just want to go back, just to clarify, when you were speaking about the reduction in the caseloads, you said this, I think I heard you say, ongoing help picked up, pick up some of the workload. So did ongoing's workload increase to reduce intake's workload, or can you just clarify just a little bit more for me? Thank you.
Councilwoman Brown, the way we are set up currently is that ongoing does investigations on, reoccurring investigations on ongoing cases. So if another investigation comes in on a case that's already open, that ongoing worker will do that investigation. So, you know, there may be 100 or so investigations in ongoing at any given time. So when we talked about helping, having ongoing help, what we did was, we took some of the cases in the regular ongoing unit, I mean, the regular intake unit, and moved that over to ongoing for help. We are looking at sometime early summer to stop ongoing from doing investigations and put it all into, excuse me, all into the hotline and investigations. Does that make sense?
I think so. So ongoing has kind of picked up the slack, but it has, but the result of picking up some of the workload of intake has still managed to decrease everybody's workload to 15.2?
No, that's just the, no, Councilwoman Brown, that's just the investigation caseload. The ongoing caseload is, it's not where we want it to be, it's not overly taxing, but it's not 12 or 11. Probably averaging around 16, 15 or 16. We want to get that down as low as we can in order to CWLA standards.
Okay, so the 15.2 then reflects intake?
Correct.
Okay. And ongoing would probably be more in the area of you said 16, 17?
Yeah, and I don't have that number with me, Councilwoman, but I'd be glad to get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Councilman Greenspan, and then back to Councilwoman Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, in this last budget, there were a number of reductions that were made. One area specifically was the Tapestry System of Care. Can you address how those changes and how those reductions have impacted delivery of care to those, to whom that, or those specific programs were intended to serve?
Councilman Greenspan, the services we're providing in 2016 is at the same level that we did in 2015. It hasn't gone up or gone down. The money that we, I think it was $2 million, that we took out of the budget for the Tapestry Program, that was unspent funds. So we're on track to spend on budget now, based on the utilization rate that we have going in after almost three months, after our first quarter.
So what you're saying is, the budget, there was money appropriated in the previous budget that was not appropriated to the, for those related services?
Yes, Councilman Greenspan, the reduction, the $2 million reduction was unspent funds from 15. I don't want to, I want to have, I wanted to get a true cost of what this program was going to, was going to cost us, without minimizing or decreasing services to our kids and families. Based on the projections, I felt that it was, I was in my comfort zone to cut that $2 million, and then so far, we're right on target, we're not above where we were supposed to be or below for our Tapestry Program for this year.
It makes me wonder, who wasn't served when money was available to serve those folks? It's more rhetorical. My next question has to do, this past budget, in the biennial budget cycle, there was $3 million appropriated each year for a new workforce development initiative, which will fall under your umbrella, if confirmed. Can you explain where you envision and how you envision that program operating?
To the best of my, Councilman Greenspan, to the best of my knowledge, that program, the funding for that, for a program there on the workforce development is Cuyahoga Works, and that started, and its main goal is to place our citizens who are unemployed into jobs. Again, I got that information after I had some preliminary conversations with David Merriman and JFS, as I did with the other department heads, to see what their major goals were. That's all I know about that program right now, but if confirmed, I will actually need to jump in with both feet to learn more about that.
So do you have any, after your initial meetings, do you have any sense, I mean, you know, we adopted that program with the expectation, I'm sure we're going to receive a little more information on the program's, not only performance, but obviously more detailed expectations. Do you have anything to add to what we might expect, or how you envision utilizing those $3 million?
I don't, I can't talk about how to, the envisioning of how to use that $3 million, but what I can tell you is that we will report out what's going on, and as soon as I get a better understanding of what is going on, I'd be glad to meet with you and to talk about it.
Okay, well, the what is going on is new, so it's not as if you're reporting on past performance. This was $3 million to create a new venture.
Right.
I have nothing else right now.
Thank you, Councilman. We're going to go over to Councilman Harrison, who hasn't had an opportunity to ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Presto, I echo my colleague, Mr. Gallagher, that we have to find a way to increase our level of funding for our seniors. Many issues have gone untouched that are really affecting that population, and I am somewhat embarrassed that, of the number that we provide in terms of funding to deal with the issues that are most pressing for the folks who are the most vulnerable, besides our babies here in the county. Having more people than Franklin County, which I assume the issues are greater, because of the larger amount of individuals that we serve here. So I hope that you really buckle down and really focus hard on trying to find a way, and even working with us, to decrease the level of funding for that population here in our county. I am, back during the budget process, and it's something that I've wrestled with since then, about the restructuring of the HHS, or the consolidation of HHS. So are we consolidating HHS? What is the plan to restructure this department? Will it be, are we including everyone? Will someone be left? Division not be included? What's going on? I know initially that, I don't know if it was the Chief of Staff was sent out, there would not be a consolidation through the HHS, and I believe there was something, I guess, from you that came out, that said there would be a consolidation or restructuring going on. Can you give us an update on where you are with that?
Yes, Councilman Harrison. Let me be really clear, there will be no restructuring or consolidation. We have nine departments in HHS, and they will continue to function. The, what we're doing is, leadership for getting the nine departments to work together, and also, I mentioned earlier about the back office, shared services, whether it be finance or contracting, but also, how are we planning? We have no coherent plan for HHS, so that we can work together to meet the needs of our citizens. There's no community initiatives, the five community initiatives that we have are going to stay, they'll be part of the senior leadership team, along with the, you know, DSAS, JFS, CFS, and child support. There's, no one's going to be left behind. But what we're trying to do is, is have a process so that we can work together. There's, we don't, we don't have common goals across the agency, and that's one of the things I will be doing, if confirmed.
Well, I appreciate the answer. I'm glad to hear that we will not be consolidating some of these efforts, because you have individual leaderships of these divisions who really do a great job, and who we don't want their outreach or the enthusiasm to fade with the result of having divisions consolidated, and they won't have a meaningful leadership role or an impact in what happens. So, especially for senior and adult services, like Mr. Gallagher said, during the budget process, we had to beg and borrow, and threaten to steal something if we have to, to get funding for certain senior centers or certain senior initiatives during that time. So I'm glad we got through that. Now elaborate on the back office functions a little bit for us, please.
Councilman Harrison, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, every one of the departments currently, nine departments have nine different financial aspects, nine different contracting protocols, nine different HR pieces that are, processes that are not coordinated, legal, again, not coordinated, IT, not coordinated on an agency level. All those functions, all those supported type services, need to be systemized, systematized and coordinated, so that we can have, these department heads and their staff need support. They need to have a, especially when coming in front of you in a biennial budget, so that, so that we can talk intelligently about what it is we need to do for our citizens, and that we, the department heads, look out for one another in developing our budgets. Same with contracting. We have no standardized protocol for our contracting. I mentioned that a little bit earlier. HR, same type of thing, I'm working with HR Director Douglas Dykes to make that happen. IT, working with Scott Work and Michael Young to make that happen. Legal, working with Michelle Myers in the Prosecutor's Office in CFS, and to look at all the different attorneys across the agency, so that, so we can coordinate that. That is a big task. Those relationships are all siloed right now. They have great relationships up and down each department, but across those departments, across our departments, we don't. That's the three to four months of getting to know everybody, of having the senior leadership teams, so that we can combine that process, so that we, you know, my job as the HHS Director is to provide support to these department heads, so they can get their job done, and to be a buffer for them, for the county executive and for the council, and to make sure that we have the services and capacity to do the job. And that's what I will do.
Thank you. So that, you know, over the next three, four months that you indicated, that'll be a part of your focus, is to be with those directors and go over those functions that they need, and where they lack, and where some support can be given.
Councilman Harrison, if I may, not only am I going to meet with them, but I'm going to meet with all their staff.
Okay.
I'm going to, just like I did with CFS, 50 to 60 folks at a time, we're going to sit down and have a discussion together.
Awesome, awesome. Just to, my last point, many of the division heads are, have very intimate or very great relationships with the providers of their, for the division. Once we get into the whole merger, or, sorry, back office function between all of the divisions, will there still be a involvement of those division directors and supervisors, I guess, to be a part of the termination of those providers who will be awarded contracts, et cetera? Because they, just going back to senior adult services, it was out of Dr. Jones' relationship and his relationships with some of these providers, where we were able to continue some services in my district, in East Cleveland, along with the county executive as well. So I'm hoping that we don't lose those individuals in that process of, and not just giving it off to some person who's going to work and look and determine who we award the contract to.
Councilman Harrison, that is definitely not going to happen. Those department heads will, and their individual program leads, will continue to have, will be the program content experts for the contracts. We're talking about an administrative function on the backside of that, helps coordinate that. You know, it would be, we would not do what you're suggesting, where we would have, someone who has no knowledge of the program content, try to design a contract for DSAS.
I have to ask, I have to ask. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Now we're going to go back to Councilwoman Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Director Presto, I was just writing this question, getting the needle to move in the direction of the seniors and moving forward for additional funding, since we're moving that way in longevity and life, what innovative initiatives have you produced in your previous role in the state of Nebraska?
Councilwoman Conwell, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that I was surprised at was that, not only DSAS, but CFS does not bill Medicaid for supported services that we, that we should be billing Medicaid for. So I know Dr. Jones, I just met with him and some of his staff about three weeks ago, to talk about the process that he's going to use in order to bill Medicaid for appropriate services. We're going to be doing that also with children and family services. The other thing, another area that I was very successful at, was that I engaged public-private partnerships from foundations to help in Nebraska for, for example, children to age 21. There was a new law that came out that we needed to provide services to youth to 21, and it took about 10 months in order to get the $40 approved by our federal, by our federal partners. So we worked with the Sherwood Foundation in Nebraska, and they helped offset the costs for the first nine or 10 months of the program. It was a public-private partnership, they put in the dollars, so that we could start that, we could start that program to provide services to 21-year-olds, up to 21. And it was a great public-private partnership, kind of like what we were, well, not kind of, but along the same vein of the Pay for Success that we're doing here in Cuyahoga County, a public-private partnership. Those are meaningful, those are appropriate, and they, but they need to be structured well, and with the appropriate oversight.
How long will you work in both roles? What is the plan? How long you, will you be in both?
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you say it again?
How long will you be in both roles, DCFS Director as well as administrator, if confirmed?
I have no date certain on exiting the CFS administrator position. I want to get a chance to look at the different, the eight other department heads, and assess what needs to be done, and then continue to lead my team at CFS in the mission that we have.
So you think this, long-term, this, both roles could be managed?
I want to have the opportunity to assess the time commitment needed for both the HHS Director position, and I know what the time commitment is for CFS, and then make a decision down the road on that.
So the county is actually saving money on the two positions, I'm assuming?
Yes.
You won't get a salary for DCFS?
I was hoping, Councilwoman, I'm just kidding. No, they'd be saving a position, but again, I want to be able to, look, this has to be successful. There's a lot of, there's a lot riding on this, and I want to do it right. I want to take my time and assess what my time commitments are with HHS. I know, again, I know what my time commitment is for CFS. I am extremely confident in my senior leadership team, though. We're not going to let anything drop at CFS. That will give me the time over the next three or four months to figure this out.
So in, who would evaluate? You said it would be Sheriff Sobel Jordan or Matt Carroll that would actually evaluate your position as HHS? Because technically, for HHS Director, you would evaluate the DCFS Director, which is, will be yourself, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We're going to go back to Councilman Schron, and back to Councilman Miller, then back to Councilman Greenspan. If anybody has any other questions, please give me a nod, because we are not running out of time, but getting there. Councilman Schron.
Thank you, Mr. President. And you acknowledged the military chain of command, so you know a little something about that, having spent 10 years there. Did you have a chance to read the charter before, in these 11 months?
I have not, Councilwoman.
Oh.
The Charter for the Council.
For what you're doing, for your job?
Oh, yes, the HHS, I thought you meant the Charter for the Council, I'm sorry. No.
No, no, the Charter for?
Yes.
For our government?
Yes.
You have, you've had a chance to read that?
I reviewed it, yes, Councilman.
Is that, it sounds like wordspeak, does that mean you've read it, or you haven't read it?
I have read it, but I didn't study it. I looked at it.
Okay, well, we'll stay with where the positions are. I consider economic development and health and human services to be two of the most important positions. One is in charge of hopefully driving revenue to the county, the other is the one that's responsible for a major portion of how we spend the money. I assume that you would agree with that in your reading of the charter. As you've read that, and I know you said it's above your pay grade, but the fact that you are now going to be two steps below you are now going to be two steps below the county executive in the way this is being done, is that the way you read the Charter supposed to be, as far as these two important positions?
Councilman Schron, I want to be able to deliver the best service possible to our As I get time and grade with HHS, I will be able to work with the Economic Development Director and see how we merge, how we've worked together, not merged, wrong word, how we work together in order to provide the best services and be able to make sure that we have the best resources for our constituents.
That person has a direct line to the county executive. You're two steps below, based on, on where this is structured, and you said it's above your pay grade.
Right.
I'm asking you, based on what you read of the Charter and what you said you talked about, or you have the knowledge, is that where you think this important position belongs?
I think that the position where it is right now meets my needs. I know I meet, anytime I went with County Executive Buddhist, he's been, he's very accessible to me, and I, I meet with him regularly. So I, I'm not trying to mince words or, but I, from where I stand, to get access to the county executive, I have no issue with that, and I can, all I do, have to do is pick up the phone and ask for a meeting date, and I get it.
Okay. You also, on a separate issue, you said you've identified that the Medicaid billbacks have not been done effectively in this county, but by, in order to make that determination, you must have come up with a number that's, that defines effective or ineffective. What's the dollar amount that you've put on that number?
We had zero.
No, I understand zero is currently. What is the dollar amount that we should have been billing, that you've now assessed that we should be in that area, like Nebraska? Having spent three years in Nebraska, I assume you have some kind of a percentage handle as to what it means.
Yes. We're, in Children and Family Services, with our MST program, we're talking anywhere between $250,000 and $300,000 a year.
Okay, okay, well, that's not, I hate, as much as that is of 1.3 billion, it's not, it's not as big as what I, I guess I was looking for you to give me a bigger number than that, anticipating. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, Director, just one follow-up question from Councilman Greenspan's question about Tapestry. My understanding was that Tapestry was being restructured in, in a way that, and reorganized in a way that would be, allow the services to be delivered at a lower cost, but, but what you said earlier suggested more of just that there was more money in that account than was needed and that, that the budget level was just adjusted back to the, the level that was actually being used in, in that account. Can you, you clarify which of those is closer to what, what the situation was?
The $2 million was unspent funds, and that was where I made the decision in order to reduce that budget. The ability to deliver services through the, both the provider network and the collaboratives is where we get our strength with Tapestry. And I don't, based on the first quarter of '16, there is no change in, up or down in the service delivery. I'm confident we can meet the needs of our, both our providers and our collaboratives and our citizens with the current structure.
So, Mr. President, Director, you're saying that in, in the last year or so, there was not a, a change in the service delivery model for Tapestry?
There was a, there was a change in how the contracts were written and the RFP was put out as far as what the, the structure of the Tapestry program is, but the basic deliverables hasn't changed.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilman Miller, are you? I'm sorry, I'm, okay.
I'll follow up.
Well, Councilman Greenspan is, is next.
Go ahead, Chris.
So we'll go with Councilman Greenspan.
All right, thank you. So it's curious that, that you're going to be kind of a player coach, right? You're still going to head up Children and Family Services and then be your own boss. So something tells me along the way that we have one too many directors. I mean, are we top-heavy? And then on top of that, you're going to report allegedly to Matt Carroll, which is another new position, but I'm not yet understanding that whole dynamic. So you're, you're going to head up two agencies, in fact, you're going to head up actually nine agencies, one of which you're, your own direct report. Is that how you understand the structure?
That's correct, Councilman Greenspan.
We should be saving a lot of money somewhere along the way. You, you made a statement that there was no coherent plan for HHS, quote unquote, prior to you coming on board. I understand that the nine agencies were all siloed, so to speak, but there was still somebody at the top of that oversight. Who, who was that under the current or the previous structure?
The interim is Matt Carroll.
Okay. And you said there's no coherent plan for HHS, yet that's going to be the person that you're going to be receiving direction from. Do you feel comfortable in receiving direction from someone who, you just acknowledged had no coherent plan for HHS when he oversaw the agency?
Councilman Greenspan, if I may, Matt Carroll's position was as a placeholder until there was a nomination for HHS Director. He did hold monthly meetings, and they were a way for us to work together and to provide information to one another so we can, for what I meant by not a coherent plan is that we didn't have an overall strategic plan for HHS, which Councilman Miller talks about at great lengths, and that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I'm sure the residents of the county wouldn't be happy to hear that there was no coherent plan and somebody was just in place to be a placeholder. On the topic of Pay for Success, which you touched on earlier, you referenced that you believe there could be additional opportunities to engage in other Pay for Success-type programs. What other, what thoughts do you have? What other initiatives do you think might qualify for a Pay for Success model?
The field is really open and brand-new in this area, Councilman Greenspan. We are in the, we're just finished our first year with Pay for Success. We're not even beginning to evaluate how successful that is yet. As we get into year three, four, and five, you know, that data will come through, and then we'll be able to really analyze whether or not we can use that model for other programs in the county. If successful, you know, I can see it being a process that we could use and benefit our county.
Yeah, my only challenge with Pay for Success is not the program being, under, under the current initiative. I believe the payout is too rich. You know, if you, if you study the plan, we're borrowing effectively about $3.7 million of effective capital to be used for the program, and if successful, we're paying out $5 million. So I would caution, as we move forward in looking at the Pay for Success model, that the rate not be so egregious to the, to the, to those who are providing the funding and taking the risk. So that's just my general statement. You know, I'd be interested to hear what specific programs, as you become more involved in understanding the program needs of the county, where, where Pay for Success may be appropriate.
Of course. Councilman Greenspan, we're going to finish up by going back to Councilman Conwell and then back to Councilwoman Brown. And that's only because we're running out of time. We have a council meeting that starts at 5:00. I think it's interesting that you have worked both for, I would assume, is a fairly conservative government in Nebraska and also for what I assume would be a fairly liberal government in Vermont. They both, I think, have a population pretty close to this county, and so, as they say in Columbus, I think you'll find the great state of Cuyahoga to be as interesting as your other two locations. Councilwoman?
Thank you. To the Chair, to Director Presto, going back to the Tapestry System of Care, just, I'm trying to understand, from the perspective, it sounds like you say one thing, but my, some of my service providers are saying there was some changes, which you're saying didn't directly impact the individuals that are being serviced. So I think one of it, one of the questions that comes out of it is, was there some addition to expand seven new organizations that had to do with Medicaid or, or something like that in regards to this?
Councilwoman Conwell, the short answer is yes, but it wasn't, it wasn't seven. If I may, I can explain. When the RFPs came back, we had six, we had eight organizations respond to the RFP. There was a scoring process. Six made the cut, two did not. The two did not were not hugely far off of the, the scoring pattern. I made a decision to include those two that did not score high, because I was concerned about the system of care across the county, and I wanted to make sure that an array of services that we could have for our citizens, so they could have access to Tapestry. Those two were, were not in the original group. They were brand-new, and I wanted to give them a chance. We will be monitoring them. We'll be doing field and desk audits to make sure that the two new entries are appropriate and working to the outcomes that we want.
So that, you initially stated that eight responded to the RFP. Six only made it. Two were, the other two, you decided to go ahead and fund them, but they weren't in the original group, so they were a different entity. They weren't from the original ones that responded?
No, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Conwell, they were part of the original eight.
Okay.
That responded.
And who is the, who is these groups?
I, I don't have their names offhand. I'm sorry.
You can give that to us.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Councilwoman Brown for a final question for our confirmation hearing today of Tom Presto.
And it's a rather easy one. One of the things that I really admire about your, your five-value statements and how you have shown, how you have shown and lived them by example, it shows with your staff, and I have heard great things from the people that work for you about the morale improving, so I applaud you for that. One of the things you've done throughout the interview is reference your team. Would you mind identifying who your team is?
They are here, actually.
Okay, thank you.
They are here. Jennifer Krosman, right there, Daphne Kelker, Tammy Chapman Wagner, Jackie McCray, Michael Brown, Deanna Kirkpatrick, Audrey Beasley, Karen Anderson, at Pay for Success.
There you go.
They're here.
All right. You sure that wasn't a setup? That was so well-executed, it's kind of hard to believe. Well, thank you, and I think you have a, even though you've been here for a while, you have a better sense of the council after the last hour and a half, and we have a very diverse council in a very diverse county, and we have at least 11 different points of view, and we like to, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend Resolution 0051 to the full council for consideration for second reading adoption under suspension of the rules.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, would you please call the roll? All those in favor?
Calling the roll, Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones is absent. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
And Council President Brady?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion carries. Is there any miscellaneous business under the Committee of the Hall? Hearing none? Any public comment unrelated to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, Mr. Bill Call has requested to address council. Mr. Call, please hit the button, and it'll show green.
Okay, it's working now. I'm Bill Call. I live in Lakewood, Ohio. Just want to share a job opening I saw in some British newspaper where the Cleveland Clinic is opening a state-of-the-art healthcare facility in London located in proximity to Buckingham Palace at 33 Groveson Place. It's a 300,000-square-foot building that's be, will be designed and built to bring high-quality academic medicine to London and the UK region. It's scheduled to be operational in 2019. The Cleveland Clinic London will include a 200-bed multi-specialty hospital and clinic. An integrated clinic-hospital design will serve local and international patients in an environment that combines excellent amenities and world-class medical care. They say this is an opportunity to work with one of the most well-known healthcare organizations in the world. Well, people don't agree on much, but I guess we can all agree that every new development in Lake, Medina, and Lorraine Counties comes at the expense of Cuyahoga County. Councilman Gallagher mentioned his concern about the elderly in Cuyahoga County and the lack of funds for their needs. Those needs will not be met if Cuyahoga County jobs are sent elsewhere, either internationally or in surrounding counties. Virtually all of the increased population in those counties comes at the expense of Cuyahoga County. And I guess that's okay. That's, in some sense, the marketplace at work. I've got a lot of friends in Lorraine County, and they're all telling me that I should join them out there, because that's where everything is moving, and they think it's really good living, and I, I guess they're right. I like Lakewood. I like being near downtown. I like Cuyahoga County. It's a fine community that's really in decay and decline, and the Cleveland Clinic's actions are part of that decay and decline. What I can't, I can understand that. What I can't understand is the complacency and complicity of Cuyahoga County agencies and the institutions in that process to depopulate Cuyahoga County. If you stand by while the clinic moves Lakewood Hospital to Avon, you are doing great damage to the county you are sworn to serve. And I would hope that this council would start taking sides and help the people of Lakewood save healthcare for their community, save the assets of the community's foundation, in Lakewood Hospital Foundation, and the $55 million currently sitting in the hospital accounts. Thank you. Okay.
No, Mr. President?